If we could all please stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and small prayer and start in for our meeting. Jim, you'd like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meeting peaceful and cordial and please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray, amen. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Wells County Council Meeting, April 2nd, 2019. First thing we have on the agenda here is the minutes. I assume everybody received their minutes electronically. There should be two minutes, one would be the regular session and then the joint executive session. Is there any additions or corrections to minutes?
I wasn't there, so I have to defer.
I guess if not, do we have a motion to accept the minutes, both minutes as presented?
Motion to approve both minutes.
We have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed, motion carries. Don't put my name there. All right. Next would be transfers, which we don't have any. Next thing is additional appropriations. Again, it kind of went out the last minute here with some of the explanations. Okay, we have Circuit Court Guardian ad litem at forty thousand. We have, Cap, you want to do each one individually? Do you guys like to do that or... Because Kent's here, Kent would like to do some of this. I think it'd be wise if we do them, yeah, you'd like to step up, Kent. Kind of go over a few of these things here. We have the Circuit Court here on the Guardian ad, am I pronouncing that right? Litem, I like it.
G A L.
Okay, okay. I was a little confused on that one, that's part of CHINs?
Uh, yes, let me, I can, I can break, I'm actually, there are three things.
Yeah, I was gonna say the other one would be jury pay.
Pretty straightforward and I can briefly touch on those. The first, there's three matters, one is the court interpreter grant, the court reform grant, and then of course the additional appropriation to the G A L, Guardian ad. The court interpreter grant, the Superior Court provides a grant every year, maybe biannually, every other year, where courts, individual courts can seek reimbursement for costs associated with using an certified interpreter. We've applied for and received a grant before. This might be the most we've ever applied for and ever received and I can't remember. I think this is the first time I recall not getting what we requested. But, so we did get awarded a thousand dollars. It's, I know it's a small reimbursement, but it kind of reverses for some fees we expended last year and we anticipate we would just expend again this year. So that's, that's the first one. Any questions on the court interpreter grant program? Second one is the request for, I've received, applied for, the Superior Court puts out a grant called a court reform grant, program grant. I've applied for this year a grant to hire a consultant to look at the feasibility of combining community corrections with probation. I'll apply for that grant to hire the consultants and so we applied for that grant, received that grant of two thousand dollars. So that's where that stands. I hired the consultants, they've completed numerous interviews with stakeholders, employees, supervisors of both probation and community corrections. They've completed that, they've reduced their interviews to a report, which I received. I anticipate making, giving that to the council, I know many of you were interviewed for that or contacted at least. So I'd like to release that to you with some recommendations and the plans kind of going forward. I'd like Judge Ansham a chance to review that, go with him, see if stakeholder things involved. I'm on spring break this week, he was on spring break last week and then I got it like a week before, so I should have a chance to sit down and talk with him about that, but that's where that stands. So that's, that's, that grant is what I would put in the grant. Finally, it takes us to the, off of the moving aspect, the guardian ad litem fees. It's, you know, under the law I'm required to appoint a guardian ad litem to represent and protect the best interest of a child, in particular in children's service cases and termination parental rights cases, which are kind of linked together a little bit. Those are the cases DCS, Department of Child Services files in my court, and that's who initiates those types of cases. I'm required to appoint them. Each year I try to request, when it comes to my budget, it's always a moving target, and this is the first time I've had to seek an additional appropriation from you. Went through my budget for the past several years. Two thousand fourteen I requested fifteen thousand and looks like I used majority of that. In two thousand fifteen, twenty-five thousand and used majority of that, but carried over something, encumbered some of that. Twenty sixteen requested twenty thousand and had the encumbrance, I carried over, so almost thirty thousand was spent in twenty sixteen. Twenty seventeen, I started a budget of twenty thousand, encumbered from my other budget sources, thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred rather, requested an additional ten thousand and then another transfer rent of twenty-seven hundred and an additional of almost seventeen thousand. That was in seventeen, so it started to go up there. And then in twenty eighteen, I had a, I budgeted for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. I transferred in from some other sources about forty-four hundred dollars in addition to already a big plus for my budget in those categories. So this year, I'm requesting an additional that I've put in from what I requested in my budget. There's a couple reasons that cost has gone up and where it's going up already this year. This is, again, this is the, I saw an additional in the past, but this is the earliest I've ever saw an additional. And there's a couple reasons for that. First, the guardian ad litem that I use, is a lawyer out of Fort Wayne, I've used her in these cases. Her billing is frequently behind, we begged and pleaded with her to get that, so she's done a better job of that. There's some things beyond her control that, just in the life of the case, she's constantly kind of billing for work she does later. She'll do the work and then bills us maybe a quarter late, so that's what happens. Sometimes the cases take a long time to kind of wrap up. And when she's wrapping up the case, in the termination case, she'll come across the things she, work she did that she didn't bill us for. When the case ends eventually, after a couple of years, there's work that she did in seventeen that she didn't, didn't bill us for. Unfortunately, I think what's going on, the termination parental rights cases are increasing. We've seen, we have a number of CHINs cases, the Children's Services cases, rising the past several years. These, the termination parental rights are the, those cases unfortunately kind of usher into the parents who, despite the efforts and services provided by the Department of Child Services, they're not making the changes necessarily to have the children return to their homes, so they usher into a termination parental rights type case. And so that guardian ad has to be pointed at, so those termination parental rights cases are also increasing in number. DCS is also filing their termination parental rights sooner than they used to, in the, in the life of the case. So they're oftentimes filing that sooner. The CHINs cases have remained high, and I say CHINs, the Children's Services cases, just, CHINs cases have remained high. My records show in twenty fifteen, we had seventy-one, and in twenty sixteen went to eighty-four. In seventeen, they went to eighty-eight, and twenty eighteen, they went down by fifty-three percent, they went to forty-one. Along that same time though, terminations, fifteen were at sixty-two. They went down sixty-three percent at twenty-three in sixteen, remained about the same in seventeen at thirty-five, and then in eighteen jumped to sixty-eight. So it's a ninety-one percent increase in eighteen of those. Couple of factors, DCS got, has some new attorneys involved, they just, and DCS took a different strategy with them a little bit, I think. They started filing those terminations sooner, filing them more frequently than they used to in the past. I think a lot of times in the past, they were willing to let people kind of work out some things and were looking for solutions outside of the termination parental rights and now they, they're just, they're moving forward to just go through terminations. So that's where we are. Also had some unique situations where I've had to appoint a guardian ad where in the cases where I normally appoint them. I've been appointed in last year, appointed a guardian ad litem more often in delinquency cases because the parents aren't there to kind of protect their, their child, the child is an attorney, but attorney sometimes has different goals or strategy, finding maybe what's in the best interest of the child, so that needs to be someone who kind of offsets that a little bit. I've had to also appoint a guardian ad to parents in termination parental rights cases because the parents just still aren't able to make some decisions for themselves and need the assistance of a guardian ad litem in addition to the attorney. So that's what's led us where we are today and why I think additional appropriation is necessary this time.
So setting the reform grant and interpreter grant aside, what's the request for the additional on the ad litem?
Forty, forty thousand.
Forty-four, forty thousand.
Yeah, forty thousand.
And your sense of it is this will carry you for hopefully the duration of the season?
Yes, I hope so.
It sounds like it's a moving target.
It is a little bit, I've had some, we're already this year down, I'm gonna say six thousand already. Just, you know, sixty-four hundred already in the hole in that category already. So I'm trying to do this, kind of average out where we are. My filings this year, I don't, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but we're already in force to be where we were last year, not higher on the termination cases. CHINs have been about the same, I don't see that kind of getting too out of control, but determinations are like raggedness.
It's too early in the season for transfers of any kind.
Probably because of the amount, check this fight, or true, I think there's a couple of reasons I'm at where I'm at too, as I said. I think most of the, most of what I submitted for this year, we encountered that because the G A L submitted a claim kind of at the end of twenty eighteen.
I remember.
And we were really behind then, so we started the year behind essentially. Spent a lot of those funds, money, a lot of the money's from this budget paper, some of it from last season, didn't have, didn't ever see that bill yet.
Pretty much, just as it is.
It's a big, it's a big number as well, kids are, and that's, or April today, but still.
No, I'm not happy to be here about it, I'll just, I'll serve some other way to give it to you, but I can't. Further sources, there's, there's other ways we can look at it this year, but that means we contract there for a flat rate. It's supposed to be one solution. Some options and see if that's maybe where we are, if the numbers are really continuing to be there. Problem is, you can see those numbers kind of.
It could fluctuate back the other way next year. So it's really hard to.
That's where I'm at, I should kind of scratch my head a little bit.
I guess it's one of the things, it is as it is.
My next question is, safety and absorb the hit?
Yeah, I don't see there to be any problem, we haven't done any additional yet, so we should be fine there. So, it's a doable thing. Why don't, you want to just go ahead and run these three for his additional purpose together?
The additional is for the.
I was gonna say the Guardian and the court reform grant, which is a grant, and the court interpreter grant.
A second.
A second? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Appreciate it, thank you. All right, that takes care of those three. Why don't we go ahead and, why don't we do jury pay real quick? That's for both Superior and Circuit Court. And I guess, I'll let you explain at least, and there was some confusion in our, when we did budget.
Budget for.
Is there something, any discussion?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll stay.
Yeah, maybe just, yeah.
Last year, they took it out of the budget from eighteen to nineteen. And they were gonna, you know, they were gonna budget it through the jury pay fund and it never got budgeted.
Sounds like just confusion or something.
Paperwork error.
Yeah, it sounds that way, yeah. So, and that's for ten thousand dollars, which puts everything back over to juries paid for remainder of the year here, so.
And there's fourteen thousand in that fund, so, you know.
Okay, okay, so it's covered then, so. Any questions or discussion on that? Go ahead.
Please, is that something that my office didn't properly?
I don't think so, I don't think so. I think they probably just had that money in that fund.
Is this the fund, the jury fund that's paid for through court costs and things like that?
For jury fees.
Okay. So it's not part of my office's budget?
No, and I don't know if it was last year or not, was it Spirit's?
I think there was a fund that's paid into through filing fees and court costs, funded. I think each court also then has a line item for jury expenses as well. And so some years, we've been able to not use this fund and use our own funds or vice versa. Some years we've used that fund and not used our budget, my understanding, seems correct.
It seems correct.
Any other questions or, because if not, do we have a motion to accept the jury pay fund?
So moved.
We got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thanks again, appreciate it. All righty, that takes care of the court side. I guess real quick, community crossing grant, is there any questions on that? That was for, these are the grant funds for community crossing project, transportation projects that now have come due, so we have to appropriate that money here for this summer's construction season. Several different projects there, which total over what, one point one some million dollars there, which again, it puts all in the appropriations for the projects here this year. Does anybody have any questions at this point? I mean, it's always been pretty clear with the projects. We won't have Nate come up if he doesn't, if nobody has any questions on it? No, do we have a motion to accept the additional appropriation for two thousand eighteen community crossing grants?
I make that motion.
Second, we have a second? Any further discussion? If not, signify, if you're in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right, we're good there. All right, next one, do we want to just bring Malia for CADA? Or CADA, I'm sorry? You want to do that? We're gonna jump, jump around here real quick, that way you can do it all at one time here and we'll do the appropriation.
Do you all have a copy of the spreadsheet or?
I don't, yeah, I don't.
All right, on the spreadsheet at the top, you can see what our fees are for this past year. The fees come in through court costs related to alcohol and tobacco, or alcohol and other drugs through the court system in Wells County. And we had a surprising year that the amount that we collected was actually greater than the request for our grants this year. We grant out that money in the areas of, on the left-hand side, you can see the four categories. Other administration, which is just that, and then you have education prevention, treatment intervention, and judicial. And so we grant out money in the community to help the drug issue in those three areas of prevention, treatment, and judicial. And our requests this year, as I said, were less than how much money we had, this is abnormal. And even with that, we still look at each grant individually as though we don't have all the money because we want to make sure that they meet the requirements that we have through the state and through our comprehensive grant. So we were able though to grant everyone their full request because they did all qualify for their particular grant. And at the bottom, you can see the remaining funds that we have is one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-three cents. And what we propose to do is wait maybe five or six months into the year and open the grant cycle back up to see if we can get another grant potentially in treatment intervention or judicial. Because right now, obviously, people in the community think, well, I don't need it for whatever, but maybe in a couple of months, there'll be a need that comes up that we could use that additional funding for. The state requires or asks that we spend a minimum of twenty-five percent in those three categories of our total funds. So that amount is the four thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. So the remaining sixteen hundred and thirty dollars, you can see that treatment, intervention, and judicial did not meet that minimum. So that's why we're wanting to wait and see later, maybe a new treatment might come up or something, another option in judicial to get some training or something, so that maybe we can still meet the minimum recommendation, twenty-five percent in those two categories later in this year. So that's a little explanation of how that works.
Just curious, Malia, if this, assuming everything goes forward here, will this additional appropriation cover that additional? Would we be back again then?
We'll have to come back.
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine. That's fine, I just wanted to make sure, just clarify.
Yes, yes, no, we, we just put in the amount that we had.
It's part of this additional, okay, that's good.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
I have a question. Not about this, but I don't know if I can vote, I'm on this board.
Oh, okay, that's fine, you stay in front of it, that's fine. Anybody else? I guess with no questions, do we have a motion to accept the CADA drug-free community additional appropriation?
Motion to approve C A D A additional.
We have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed, motion carries. Appreciate it, Malia, thank you. Okay, that handles all our additional appropriations, right? Good, that's out of the way. All right, next thing we have is Wells County Sheriff, that plucks the board.
Well, I have good news, I'm not asking for any additional appropriations, so I'm glad I'm not.
That's good.
I'd be third in line here to be asking for money, but hopefully I can inform you on some other issues and may save us a little bit of money, but, which is always a good thing. As far as jail numbers, I just presented yesterday a hundred and twenty-four inmates to the commissioners. I'm happy to say, which is, it's still a high number, but we're in the right direction, we're at a hundred and eleven as of about a half an hour ago.
It's going down, okay.
DOC showed up today and picked up a bunch of sentence commitments and, and so we got, we got rid of thirteen of them in the last twenty-four hours.
Yeah, okay.
So that eased a little bit of our numbers there. We have, so a hundred and eleven total, twelve F six, six DOC. So that's our numbers as of today. If you haven't read the article about our meeting yesterday, I'm just gonna kind of recap a little bit, just to, for your guys' sake, on what we're at. We're a nine-four bed facility, so that puts us about, at that number, about seventeen over. To properly classify males and females, and when I say classify, I'm talking minimum, security, medium, maximum, males and females. Jail standards usually recommend that we operate at about eighty percent of our capacity. So a nine-four bed facility, that puts us at about seventy-five, is a good, comfortable number to be at. Now, we have been seventy-five in quite a long time. Quite frankly, we haven't been under a hundred since I've taken over as sheriff, so. Hundred twenty-six was the highest last week, one day, that we were at. Somebody asked me if that was a record and I asked the jail commander yesterday and she said we were at a hundred and thirty-five several years ago at one point. So I hope I don't ever see those numbers, but. So that's kind of just to, to just throw that out there so that you guys know what we deal with when we have that many inmates. It creates all kinds of different obstacles that we have to overcome, one being medical. So the medical for us, you know, we're required statutorily to provide medical services for them. When it comes to physical and mental medical issues, that service is contracted through a company called Quality Correctional, who we contract through them. It's based on a certain number of hours that we contract through them for services. We have an onsite nurse currently that comes three days a week. They're available twenty-four seven, but they're onsite, contracted sixteen hours a week. Currently, that, that number for quite a long time has not really been cutting the demand of what's needed within the facility. And it's not necessarily just because our numbers are high, it's because of who we have in jail. The mental issues, the physical issues, the things that they tend to do. So numbers don't necessarily drive that number up, so I had to make a decision to increase my medical hours from sixteen to twenty-four. I think and I believe that I can do that within my current budget. So what I have in my budget medically, there is a portion of that that is there for outside medical services, certain things that aren't covered under the contract. And speaking, going back in history of what we spent outside of the contracted issue, and those type of things arise, I feel that they increase, the increase was fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for those additional hours. That's per week, and so that'll be spread out over four days, and that's gonna be starting here immediately. So that's something that I had to increase, we're gonna evaluate that and see how that goes and, and quite frankly, we're putting in more hours, I know personally, than what they're contracted. So we need, we need to get that done and we're gonna have a bigger problem on our hands if we're not taking care of the needs medically. We'll end up in some kind of lawsuit or those type of things, which obviously, none of us want it, it'd be a lot more expensive than the fourteen thousand dollars, so. So those are some issues that, you know, those high numbers are dealing with. So I'll come back to something else, but I gave you guys the monthly numbers. We have been, it's been a busy month. If you look jail activity wise, this time last year, we booked in pretty much about the same number. I think everybody gets spring fever about this time of year and we've made quite a few arrests, if you look. We had fifty-four misdemeanor arrests and twenty-five felony arrests this last month, that's just our agency. So that's something else to keep in mind. You know, we, we are the main jail facility for all the law enforcement agencies in the county, including the state police, if arrests are made. So that number of people that are put in jail is not always derived by just the sheriff's deputies or detectives, so.
I was curious, has there been a policy change with traffic stops since it more than doubled? Is there some new strategy with stopping cars? It just seems like it doubled and.
Well, if you look at this time last year, we were shorthanded for one. We had, we were several deputies down at this time last year. They say we're fully staffed, but we have one guy that goes to the academy in May, he's not on his own, he's in training. He's not on his own, he's in training. So, but we are staffed according to our numbers outside of that one that's in training, so warmer weather will generate more traffic stops. You know, colder weather and those type of things, we're working more accidents and those type of things versus...
I was just comparing it to 2018 versus 2019, but...
Yeah, I know, I saw that number too, and specifically in 2018, I know we were shorthanded staffing-wise as far as deputies at that time. So I know that has part to do with it, I can't say that it's all to do with it. I was quoted in the paper recently with the Superior Court Judge stating that, obviously, we have a pretty young force right now, that I was asked my opinion of whether or not I thought a lot of newer officers meant a lot more, a little more activity. I'd say there's some truth to that. Nothing to take away from anybody that's been on the force, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, but yeah, when, I was that way when I first started too, but they're doing their job, they're out there patrolling, they're out there. But if you can look, the traffic stops increased, but the tickets haven't gone skyrocketing. You know, I don't put any, as sheriff, I'm not putting any kind of quota on how many cars they have to stop or how many tickets they have to write. They use their discretion, and I feel like they do the job of doing that, so.
Is there a pattern to your increase of felony arrests? There are certain felonies that are being committed?
Most of our arrests in this last month have been drug arrests. You know, there's several factors that can sway that. If it's a repeat, if they have a previous conviction, that can make misdemeanor, certain misdemeanor classification felonies that may not have been a felony, but they're repeats. So those things can, there's so many different things that can skew that number or from being a felony or not, so.
I was curious, what's your take on marijuana as far as a drug being stopped? I understand in Adams County, they seem to let them go with that. Are we a zero-tolerance county for that?
Well, I think what a lot of counties are doing at some stages too is they are citing them in the court instead of taking them to jail. And I think, I know one of the commissioners shared with me recently some stuff that the state's doing to experiment with the pretrial release when it comes to stuff. If you watch any of the reality cop shows on TV, a lot of them will, you know, they're like, "No big deal, we'll cut you a ticket, you'll go to court." It doesn't get them out of the charge necessarily, but it doesn't tie up the jail, it doesn't tie up the court system. I think that, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
I just was curious, if you pull a car over and they, it's a smell of marijuana and you arrest them for drugs, and then they go to the jail, and it fills the jail up with those people faster than it would otherwise.
Our prosecutor, our prosecutor right now, if there's a marijuana arrest, we don't cite in court, they go to jail, so.
So we're putting those people that are smoking marijuana in the jail, zero tolerance? I was just curious. I mean, the trend is that it's a problem because other states are legal, and I think that out-of-towners may be passing through, and I don't know who, what the percentage of locals versus out-of-towners would be, but I just know that the jail at 124, if you've got Michigan that has a recreational, anybody coming through can be arrested.
And I brought this up with the commissioners too. I've been meeting regularly with the judges, I've been informing them on a weekly basis of my jail numbers. I know the judges have been looking at those pretrial numbers and evaluating, which is similar to what this program is, that the state's trying to experiment with in this pretrial, is there's a series of, they're going to look at each case and say, "Should this person be in jail, or should I release them on their own recognizance to show up at a later date for court?" Instead of putting a bond on that, maybe they can't afford it, they can't bond out of jail. So if they don't have a failure to appear in the past, they don't have a certain criminal history and those type of things, if they meet a certain criteria, I know the judges are looking hard at that right now. And when they get those cases that may come in, they go to their initial hearing, you know, within a day, they have to be seen before court, within 48 hours, that's the law. So they're going to be seen within 48 hours, the judges are trying to do their best to evaluate each of those situations to release those people and give them a court date to show up, so.
As a law officer, doesn't it seem difficult to enforce a law that certain states consider legal? For instance, Michigan is the state next door. I'm just curious. I don't use the product, I'm just trying to identify. If the jail is full of people that are smoking marijuana, can we afford to arrest everyone that's using it legally at home and driving to the state? That's all I'm asking, I'm curious.
Actually, I don't find it hard, other than the fact that you may get complaints from the people you're arresting, so. But unfortunately, they know the rules and the laws for that state until it's legal. You know, we hear a lot of sob stories, I think, as far as why we shouldn't take them to jail.
Impaired driving is impaired driving.
Yeah, even if it gets legalized, there's still going to be restrictions, right? I mean, police are not going to be able to be out recreationally using marijuana and still enforce the law, so there's still going to be standards that are up to place, whether it's legal or not. So driving a car is one of them, whether they legalize it or not, you can't drive a car impaired, so they're going to go to jail if they're impaired, instead of letting them loose and they get in a car and go get in a wreck and kill somebody.
It's always the most extreme. It's the most extreme statement, but it could be the passengers in the car smoking it just a second.
It could be.
So it's not automatic.
Yeah, my biggest fear as an officer, in those type of cases where we make discretionary choices to let them go, whatever that may be, is what are they going to do? If I go home that shift and I come back tomorrow and find out that because I didn't take them to jail, they went home and then two hours later decided they needed a pack of cigarettes, and they drove to the store and hit some kid crossing the street. And, you know, as an officer, I'd have to live with that decision, so it is. You have to play devil's advocate a lot in those type of situations, so I get it both ways. I don't want to tie up to jail, but I don't want, I don't want my job being harder and our jail being the size that it is to keep me from doing my job and enforcing the law, so, you know, we're doing the best that we can. I know the commissioners and the councils have done a great job. We have a great facility. It's, you know, you guys, when things break, you guys fix them. I've said that over and over in meetings, we have a good building. It's just, right now, it's not, it's putting us in a tight spot. So I'm, as the sheriff, I'm doing everything I can to keep us in check, you know, liability-wise and those type of things, so we'll just have to keep evaluating it. As the new sheriff, I'm trying to work with the courts and everything else to try to streamline this pretrial process. And that's one other thing I had a note of I wanted to bring up, that I brought up with the commissioners, and I want this to be for everybody. You know, everybody always is talking about how high our pretrial numbers are, and that's what we are. We're not a prison, we're a jail. We are a pretrial jail, we'll always have pretrial numbers in our jail. That's what we should have the most of, is pretrial people, constantly revolving, people coming in, and when they get sentenced, we get them out. They either go to prison, or they're serving, unless they're serving local county time, which is a year or less, they're going to be there. But we are a pretrial jail, and so I just want to kill this misnomer that we need to get our pretrial numbers down. We need to streamline the process of once they're booked into jail to the time they're sentenced. And that's where I've been putting a lot of my focus in the last, you know, first three months here as sheriff, and trying to streamline that with the courts and public defenders and everybody involved in that process.
And you have been successful in that. It is moving faster now than it was.
So, but there's a lot of turning parts. You know, I was asked by a commissioner if I thought the clog was at the courts. Well, it's always going to be at the courts, because it's not easy, but it's a quick process if I arrest you and take you to jail, right? That's the quick part. The long part is the due process, right? You know, their innocence will prove them guilty, they got a right to be heard, that process takes a while, so we're searching, we're looking for ways to try to help with that number. But not arresting people in those type of things is not my solution, so. As far as income, one thing that's not written on yours, I didn't get the number until the end of the day today, there was no DOC per diem in there for March. We did take in $24,995 of DOC per diem for March.
How much was that again?
$24,995, which brought that total to 67,910. And then the overall revenue so far this year to 77,638.02. So I don't see any significant changes monetarily in what's in there. I did bring up with the council or with the commissioners about per diem. We, for over 30 years, we have been paid $35 a day to house DOC. We do get paid, even though statutorily we have to house F6s now, which is the felony level 6s. We get paid though, even though they're here, it just takes up numbers of beds within our jail. That is being pushed very, very hard by the Indiana Sheriff's Association right now to get that bumped up to $55 a day. 35 is, you know, like I said, it's been that way for over 30 years, and that does not even come close to cutting the cost of what it takes to house somebody, to feed them and everything else, so I don't know if it's going to happen. We, sheriffs have gone to the state house and we're talking to our legislators and everybody else to try to get that number brought up. They had a little rude awakening the other couple of weeks ago, they have a safe keep, like if we have somebody that we have a problem with, we can pay DOC to house them, well, they were charged enough $55 a day to house them. And we broke, you know, brought that up and they, Doug Carter, I believe, the commissioner of the DOC, actually made an amendment, they dropped that down to $35 a day, so. They're charging us what?
Nice to see that they recognize the difference.
Yeah, so I will give them credit there, they did do that, so. Any questions on the reported monthly numbers? Lastly, I just wanted to just inform you that I did something that I've worked hard at here for the first three months, looking into was to try to make a change within our facility when it comes to feeding our inmates. Obviously, that's a big expense. I mean, you look at medical, we pay about $100,000 just contracted medical a year. We spend over a quarter of a million dollars just feeding inmates for a year. So between salaries and all the meal costs and everything that we do there, so identified a lot of issues when I first came in as sheriff of things that I wanted to fix, and we did a lot of research as far as streamlining our ordering process to going to a full-service vendor, which is a very common thing right now amongst jails. It's been very successful, and we have chosen to go to a full-service vending within our facility. What that means is they, it will pretty much operate without a hitch as far as we are paying for a contracted service for them to utilize our facility to cook meals within our jail for a contracted rate per meal through that service, so.
And they use our facilities?
They use our facilities to do it, yes. It's not something that's trucked in. The, currently, last year alone, I think we spent approximately, like I said, about $253,000 between salaries and the cost for our meals, using the cost savings between, and this is some good news, and I was hoping not to cover the, everybody's appropriations that they just asked for. But if you use the same number, we served 100, over 106,000 meals last year totally for the year, just factoring in alone, just salary. Now, this doesn't account insurance and benefits and everything like that, this is just budgeted salary numbers and meal money spent. Our average meal cost was $238 a meal. So to contract through this service, which we did, they did meal testing for us, I ate the food, they brought it in. It's not McDonald's, but it actually provides a better calorie intake for the inmates. There's some plant-based protein in this that will help with their protein count. They, we still utilize inmate workers in the kitchen, trustees that we utilize in there. The program will educate them and certify them in SafeServe, which is something they can take out into the workforce if they get out of jail and want to get a job working at a restaurant or a kitchen or anything, which you are required to have our cooks certified and SafeServe through that, so there's some educational portion. They take on the liability as far as if there's grievances through, for food or for anybody that wants to sue us for the food, they assume all liability in that. We, they assume the employees, the employees are no longer ours, they're theirs.
Did they hire some of ours, or?
They hired one. Actually, we are down, we, as of today, we're down to one kitchen employee. We have another one starting tomorrow, but they did assume our current employee, their benefit, they honored what they were making and the benefits that they had. Actually, no offense to the county, they have a little bit better insurance. So she has some great job opportunities working for this company, so it was kind of a correlation of working with her and this company and everything else, so they have great opportunities there. And this is going live April 15th, so I encourage any one of you, after the 15th, they're going to be there for several weeks getting this implemented, and I'd love to show it to you and how it works. Grange County does, uses this company. Porter County just went live, and Porter's up by Chicago, they're a pretty big jail, so, yeah, there's some good things out of this, and I'm excited about it. The Grange County Sheriff, Jeff Campos, up there really loves this program and everything else. This company is a small-based company out of Michigan.
Is this a new, has that been available historically, or is this all new?
It has been, but they, kind of, over the years, they, these companies did more commissary stuff, and they ventured more into the food realm, and now it's becoming...
Sure.
Yeah, a lot of the jails are picking up, there's several. I probably spoke with four different companies alone that do this. My important part was, I'm not going to feed them, you know, something that tastes horrible. This company did a food test for us and brought meals in for us to taste test and all those things, so I think that this is something good, it'd be a little bit of a change for them, but. So in all, at the end, if, based on the meal cost for them, we're looking at about $2.03 per meal under them, which would save us, if you use the exact same number from 2018, would give us a cost savings of about $36,000. If you add in the benefits that those employees, that the county was paying for their insurance, and I went straight up if they were full or single, or, I mean, family or single and those type of things, that was an additional $28,000 that the county kicked in for their portion of the benefits. So overall, there's the potential to save about $65,000.
That's great.
In the meal costs there, so. So again, another item, try to improve the process, it's something I can do within my budget. Obviously, it'll be something that probably will save us money at the end of the year and maybe future years to come, so.
Sounds good.
Good work.
Good news. Like to hear that, yeah.
No, I hate to hear that. You know, chewed up that much, because I was hoping I'd use it somewhere else somewhere at the end of the year when I need it, but.
Sounds good.
Any questions for me?
Yep. Everybody's good?
Thanks, Scott.
Appreciate it, Scott. Good work, good work. All right, next we have roadway and trail agreements. Nate, if you'd like to step forward, I don't know, Mike, are you going to step up with him?
... just because some of what was done before, you remember the South Corridor study and some of the traffic we had, this was one of those pieces. Guess what I'm here to present is, we've had so much success with the South Corridor recently between community crossings projects, a recent federal aid award, and the local tracks awards. We've got a number of projects that come out of that and at a rate that I don't think anybody really expected that we'd see. I myself were just optimistic at it, as one cheerleader for it, not expecting projects to go that quickly. And something that we've talked about for a long time as well, what about the north side? North have blocked in all the way through Austin to the Allen County line. And so we had studied with Butler, Fairman, and Cypher, the area that you see here in red on this graphic, what we're looking at doing is doing a larger north corridor study. And that would include a number of different county roads and state road one, trying to see where is traffic going, what improvements we need to do, what sort of projects do we have? Some of them I'm aware of, but we want to do something a little more comprehensive because we wanted to use and leverage a study similar to the South Corridor for the north areas. And so, and... And so, in conversations with commissioners and with Butler Fairman, I have two different proposals, kind of covering the different options that we have. And, and talking to Michael, we wanted to try to incorporate, before we did something larger, the discussion of trails. So, I guess what I'll.
So, one of the opportunities that came up with this study is that when the engineer's out there doing the, the roadway study, we get a cost benefit if they're doing two things at once. So, the opportunity of doing a trail study when they're studying the same roadways for, for vehicular improvements became a real opportunity for us, really the start that the Pocahontas Trail Project needs to get going. Every project needs something to start with. This study would provide the engineering numbers, the decisions on, on what route would be the best way and, and most financially feasible, as well as giving us a, a game plan for how to finance the project, whether it's through fundraising, grants, or whatever it's alike. And one of the big ones out there right now is the next level trails grant. And we, in a minimum, would need a study like this to apply for it. And it's a very, a very lucrative grant for trails that have hadn't been available. And there's two years left on the calls for it. And if we have this opportunity, we'd have a shot if we chose to do that.
So, I guess what I'm, what I'm requesting from Councilman Danny is just essentially your agreement to use the Loet or the special distribution funds. We have used that for the south corridor study and actually that fund's also used as part of the first two thousand and sixteen Community Crossings Management Grant funds. We just recently closed out the remaining funds from two thousand and sixteen's Community Crossings grant and that money went back into that account. And so, it's my understanding that there's more than enough money in that account that could be used on this north corridor study. The hope would be is that to take the south corridors and the north corridor studies and then Michael and I would work together on essentially doing a modified thoroughfare plan, modifying the county comprehensive plan in two thousand and twenty with the result of these two studies and identify a number of different community crossings, federal aid, next level trails, regional cities, I mean, any number of different grant opportunities that we can leverage out of that. But we need to start identifying those projects and fitting them to the appropriate essentially tags. And with the track record we have, I'm, I'm excited to see kind of some of what we're trying to do with that. So, and this will help us out long-term as far as what we're trying to see.
In my opinion, the south study was priceless and I think the north study will be priceless also.
Yeah, it's a case where, this is where you have to start. There's a, you know, in today's world, you just can't do it without these, so it's definitely a need.
It's so helpful for us and for me as, as a representative of the county to go to indot with some real numbers and to try to identify what those projects are and pinpoint them pretty clearly. It's gonna give you as the elected officials as well, some real information because we've got some very good data as far as what we're trying to do already. And for this, it was essentially something we wanted to wait on and see how the south corridors work before I wanted to bite something like this off. Because between the two different options, the study itself with the trails is a hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-dollar study. So, if I'd come to you for that sight unseen without the recent kind of history that we've had, I think that might've been a little harder sell. But knowing what we've been able to do recently and what we're certainly hoping to do, next level trails didn't exist two years ago, it's, so right now is really the time. In talking to Butler Fairman, it's my understanding that they could have this study at least at a ninety percent status in October of this year. And then between October, November, and probably January, February of next year, they could finalize it. Because at that point, we'd like to sit down with a number of elected officials and even state officials to get their input before we put a final stamp on that process, that project. And I think we're gonna try to go for grant funds even before the study's done, which is what we did with the south corridors. Local tracks we submitted before the study was done. We submitted for the federal aid on County Home and, and four fifty east before we finalized the report and we found out soon after. So, most of the big projects were awarded before we even finished the date on the report. So, we're hoping to do the same, but obviously, there's some, there's some big projects here, certainly. So, and there's a lot of needs. I think everyone can think of a number of different, different issues in Jefferson, Union, Brock Creek and Lancaster counties that need addressed, so we're hoping to do that. So, certainly, I would like to recommend that we include the trails as part of the, the overall project. I know that wasn't necessarily something we started with initially, but there's been quite a, quite a, quite a need addressed for that, so. And the funds are there available for it, so.
Where's the overall project looking at, clear to the north county line?
Yes, so actually, we'll do traffic counts just as people are coming and going from the north county line. What we're gonna try to identify is, is kind of diversional traffic patterns that are going north-south. There are a couple east-west corridors in that, but predominantly, once you get north of, two or three hundred north, then a lot of traffic is just commuters and they're finding alternative paths to go north. I mean, for the very same reason we call county, Wells County Route four fifty east, Tealy is, is one of those sort of indications of driver patterns and just what people are learning to do. So, we want to try to identify some of those roads and what's going on because I don't want to make interstate highways out in the rural areas of the counties because all I'm gonna do is encourage speed and the accidents that you do have are gonna be faster and more lethal. So, that's not, that's not good engineering practice for us. So, we want to try to make sure we're smart about doing improvements on these areas because the, if we're, if we're not, we're gonna, we'll regret it, so.
I was curious, I'm, I'm thinking to the county line, is, is it worthwhile to engage with Allen County because that, if you were to say, for instance, a four lane up through there and then it gets to the county, does that really solve the problem or?
Well, in fact, one of the partners in the project is NERC, so the, any interregional coordinated council we've actually met with, they're actually gonna do some environmental assessments for us, red flag analysis and traffic counts. So, and I've met with them in anticipation, so the reason your project isn't two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars is because they're doing quite a bit of traffic counts instead for us. So, and they had done that for the first study as well and they were quite encouraging about us finishing this. They had some input as far as gee, we think you should do X, Y, and Z and some little it's, wait until we get some other analysis and I want to take their information in. But this study wouldn't be possible without their partnership. And I think long-term, as we kind of develop this, you're gonna see some partnerships, not just, it's not just a Wells County issue, it's an Austin and it's a Bluffton issue.
And school.
And it's a Norwell. I mean, I, I think one of the coordinating meetings, we're gonna be sitting down with Norwell and, and Bluffton High School. One of the projects, the, the County Home and four fifty east project, we got a letter from the transportation director because they can't get buses around the corner. I mean, that was a slide in my presentation in dot. I need to know where there's partnerships. I was talking to the sheriff a little bit about areas of, of interest and dealing with flooding. So, we're trying to look at different intersections that are subject to river flooding and how do we want to try to deal with that so we have, we can address emergency issues. All those go into that comprehensive plan, that county plan, and those are all very important to the funding agencies. And I mean, a little intersection, we were awarded three million dollars. Why? Because it checked off numerous issues that we need to address. And once they're done, when you move a road, it's, it's in the new spot forever. So, why continue to just ignore those issues? So, we can't fix them all, but I mean, if I can fix one major area every five years, you know, that's, that's quite a few of them over my career. So, let's move the ball forward and this one's gonna help me get it, identify quite a few projects. Working with Michael jointly, we can put a good plan together long-term.
I am a member of the Wells County Trails Group and I will refrain from making the motion and I will abstain from voting.
As I say, with Vicki now part of it, probably be a good idea for you to step away from it too, so.
I know one thing out of that south study that we got, you know, we found out about pipeline out there, you know, we had no idea what that was on.
Sure alters the plan.
Yeah, that all related to the situation out there real quick. You know, maybe somebody like this might shift something to the north along that section. And we don't know.
As a bridge crossing or, or something under, under the ground that isn't really on the radar right now.
So, I think.
Well, I'd like to commend you for taking an effort to move forward with some development. You know, Wells County and Bluffton in particular has needed a, a course to take and it's good to see this going forward and I, I certainly, I'm in favor as well, so. I'd make that motion, so.
Make a motion to go ahead and take both the trails and the study, right?
I would make that motion to go with both at this time. I'll second that motion.
Wait a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it. All right, next on the law agenda, here's Roy with the resolution for highway garage land purchase.
Hey, I've sent to council members a copy of the resolution. This starts in connection with the possible construction of a new county highway garage for the county or any government unit to buy real estate. It has to go through a certain procedure. Step one on that procedure is the fiscal body, that would be in the case, the county, county council, needs to pass a resolution to the effect that it's interested in making a purchase of specified land or structure. And so, attached to the proposed resolution is, as best I can show, the area that the commissioners have suggested, it would be, the exact confines would be determined by a survey, but that's basically roughly twenty acres east of the former Corning plant. In the executive session, we talked about that and had a lot of good suggestions from council members. And so, yesterday, the commissioners did give approval with the draft that I had made of an option agreement that was discussed in executive session and I shared that with, with you in last night's email. I'm sure you haven't read or studied it yet, but at least we're wanting council members to be aware of, of what we're doing as far as the steps. So, what I'm here for tonight would be to seek the council pass the resolution that I prepared to designate this property as, property the county is going to be interested in. The next step would be for the commissioners to appoint two appraisers and we have selected two appraisers. I've talked with them and they have indicated a willingness to do that appraisal. Statute says, once the, the appraisers have been selected, they are to return their separate appraisals to the commissioners within thirty days and then the commissioners are to share that with council. So, once we get the appraisal, we'll make that available to you. One thing in looking at the option agreement, I've prepared it so that the purchase price is the average of the two appraisals, which is the maximum the county could pay anyway. So, we haven't presented that to the landowner, but I'm told by one of the commissioners that they're aware we're restricted in how we have to go about in buying the real estate. So, I'm assuming that's not gonna be a problem. But anyways, that's what I'm here for tonight. I've got three copies of a resolution and would request that you.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
As I read this over, are they, because of the, the environmental issues that may exist or may not exist, are they going to do an environmental study for us?
Fishers would do that in investigating.
Why would we pay for something when they're trying to prove to us that it's good? And then we come along later, if we don't like their results, then we hire somebody else also. But I know those people have to have licenses, you know, to do those things and qualify. So, I guess, I don't understand why the buyer is paying for that when they're trying to prove.
Well, I think it's part of the buyer's due diligence in deciding whether or not the land's suitable for its, for its purpose.
Well, I think it ought to be determined before that, that it is, is determinable. They should have some kind of study done before, I guess, we're even interested in it. And if we don't like theirs, then guess what? We run R, R A, soil analysis of the property. I don't know, I, I know there's a lot of issues out there over the years and stuff. One of them, I think, we talked a little bit about, you know, that drainage, it just scares me tremendously. And I know how these environmental laws go. Once you become the owner of that, you're stuck with that no matter what. They go back on to the seller.
Hence more reason for the buyer to want to check it out.
Yeah, and it's, I also think it ought to be the seller will approve to us for, for we spending money to, to figure out if there is a problem out there. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I defer to your knowledge. If selling real estate, does every, every client that lists property with you, first thing they do is go out and get an environmental study so you know that you can sell it to somebody?
Well, I guess that's what I would want to know.
Well, I know you'd want to know it, but who's gonna want to pay for that?
Well, usually the person that's got the property, I would think, would be the one who would be willing enough to pay for that, to prove that there's no problem to start with.
Jim, I look at it as residential, who, who would pay for a home inspection?
Uh, the buyer. And they should, because you don't go hire somebody that is, you know, representing the seller. All I'm saying is, the seller should represent that there's no problems out there and if we don't like that, then we go hire somebody to check it out for sale.
Well, probably the, when the, in the real estate, the, the real estate sales disclosure form, not, not what you need to file with the auditor and assessor to get your deed recorded, but, but on any residential property, you've got a checklist from the state form. Probably the most frequent thing is, don't know. And nobody wants, I don't, nobody wants to make a representation that a buyer's gonna translate into a warranty. I, I see your point, the seller oughta, oughta stand behind it, but yet, I, I think, at least in the, in the commercial area, the, it's the buyer's due diligence to make whatever investigation they want as to the suitability. I mean, we're, we're not only talking about environmental issues, but depending on what you're gonna construct there, you may want soil borings.
I'd be definitely okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, I would think that would be something that they, you know.
Well, let's, let's put it this way, it might be a good thing to say, you ought to take our price average of the two appraisals because you didn't have to have this environmental study for.
But, but that's all in the option, right? I mean, what we're discussing right is the option part, not the resolution. It's the next step with the commissioners.
We're talking about what's in the option and that's why I presented it to you. I'll, I'll certainly discuss that with commissioners and if we think we can fly to, to say have the seller pay for that. I'm just concerned that, you know, it's, it's, I think it's more common for the buyer to pay for that as part of his due diligence in deciding whether he wants, whether or not he wants to buy the property.
And to go along with, later on in the report, I seen where the reference is that the owner of the property, which is this LLC, which has the Corning old client, and I think it's stated that they're gonna say that they have no contaminants on their property also. Or maybe I get it wrong, but that's what I thought. I thought, how can they, how can they, you know, state to the fact?
Since there is none, or they know of none?
Well, the way I, you know, I have to back look at, you know, all my old scripts here and stuff, but I was kind of under the impression that if they knew there were some, that they would sign to that effect, you know, that there was not gonna be any on the neighboring property also, you know, not only the property we're interested in, but their property. And we already know what's been on their property.
Well, again, it's not part of the resolution, but it's, it's part of the next step and certainly I have, I appreciate any comments that any of you have. Kind of like, well, how many cooks do we want in the kitchen, you know? But the more eyes, the better. I mean, the, the point is, we, we did have some good discussion in the executive session. We want to carry that through so that it's, it's a team effort and, and I, I value your comments. comments.
Any further questions or?
I think it's a fair point, if there's some contamination on site, then it should be a recognized issue that could affect the deal, but, you know, again, it's not known until it is known true. I mean, they were, I, I vaguely remember there was a cleanup out there at one time in that waterway, was there not? I mean, it was years and years ago.
I was a kid, I don't know.
There was some-
There was TV here.
Right, there was, there was a cleanup and people were in suits and the whole business, and I thought at some point, there was some effort done to, to clean up the site if, if for whatever was in it at the time, and nobody ever heard what it was, so.
All the more reason for the environmental study.
If we get these studies done prior to the appraisals being, being a sense of paying for appraisals, if it's contaminated, right? We're not going to buy it anyhow. So I would get it appraised prior to that.
Well, that's the next step. I think we select the appraisers, we've got 30 days, they've got to appraise it.
How can they appraise it if they don't know what the contaminants might be or-
True, would the value be lower if it was a contaminated site? That's, that's an explanation.
Then we wouldn't want to buy it anyhow.
True. Well, depend on what it's contaminated with.
Right, depending on the extent of it.
I, you know, I would be surprised if appraisers weren't mandated.
Well, the appraisal will, well, if it's, if it's, the point is, why spend the money to obtain the appraisal? I, I can see that. As, as opposed to the appraisal fixing the price, if you have it appraised, we know what the maximum that can be paid, but still, the option agreement is still subject to passing environmental muster. If it doesn't pass, what are you going to do? You're either going to walk, or you're going to say, I'm not going to pay that money for it because of the contamination. You're going to have to lower the price to take care of any remediation that we might have to do, assuming that it's marginal enough that you want to go ahead and buy the site.
That's a lot of, a lot of what ifs at this point. Any further questions or?
So our resolution would, would just start the ball rolling to get an appraisal, but not proceed with the purchase if we tested and had a bad problem.
You're not committing to the purchase.
It's just the interest. We're interested, we're interested.
So, so no harm, no foulment list at this point, as it says?
Again, remember that word, interested.
Exactly.
Interested, that, that clarifies a lot there that could be game changers.
We're interested in purchasing.
That's, yeah, this stays. Any other questions or? What resolution number would this be? Four?
I'm sorry, what was the number?
Four. Four. I guess having said that, do we have a motion to accept the Resolution 2019-04? Resolution to affect that Wells County is interested in making a purchase of specified land or of structure?
I'll make the motion to proceed.
Motion?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. What's that? Opposed? Motion will carry for this resolution, 2019-04. Next thing we have on the agenda is the Haven Manufacturing CFI-1 and Haven Manufacturing Representatives, did everybody receive their information on that? How many we got? These are ours for, there's five of them. Oh, oh.
Are you, are you David?
Yeah.
We've missed you. Yes, uh, so you want to start with the CF1s to the compliance or do you want to-
Yeah, we've got CF1 first, is there? Right there.
So the CF1s are essentially the compliance of the Bayons that were already provided. You should have four of those, two of them that were issued in 2011, and one in 2014, and one like you guys did last year in 2018. Um, I believe, uh, some of you guys, I know Seth was at the facility, and I know Seth was at the facility when we did a tour and wanted to specifically point out at that time that we were in the facility of what that equipment was that had just came in and what you guys had debated on. Check out to see that, and got to see some of the things that they do there. They are, you know, certainly at the level of employees that they indicated in their tax abatement, things are going very well out there, hence the reason for the next part of the discussion, so.
Any questions in New York stuff? The CF1?
As I saw, it looked like it was in order, is that right?
No, I didn't see anything that's on the order.
It's going very well out there, I think, uh-
Looks like they're all in up.
I think David has moved his machines how many times now?
Today. I'm working on that today.
Um, you want to go ahead and go into the S, does that be one?
I don't know, if you guys approve those first.
Okay, do the S, the S, okay, the CFI-1.
The CF1.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Cause if not, do we have a motion to accept the area, or Haven Manufacturing CF1?
Motion to approve CF1 for Haven Manufacturing.
Motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Both, let's increase on that one.
All right, and we are here today with a SB1 statement of benefits for new, a purchase that they are making. Some of it is in the facility already and some of it is on its way, certainly not getting here as quickly as you would like it to be. Some of this essentially is, is similar equipment that they purchased in the past, two new CNC mills and two new robots. The total purchase price for all of that, for those two, four pieces of machinery is over $400,000 that they're adding to the facility and, and again, looking to add five additional employees. And I can let David McDonald here, the production manager with the facility, kind of runs everything and can kind of give a little background of why there is a need for these types of products.
We've brought in a lot of work from Stryker Medical out of Michigan. Our facility in Michigan does a lot of this work with Stryker. They're overflowing, over capacity in Michigan. Uh, we've got, you know, I've seen them bringing some people in. I've hired three in the last week, lost two in the last week, I'm up one, I guess, so.
We feel your pain.
Yeah, we've got, we're rearranging everything in the shop. I've got a plan in place to eliminate some clutter, some older machinery that we don't use, some excess stuff that we've just got laying around from the early Howard Tool days. And I'm going to be moving all my lathe equipment up into this area to make room for, I don't know, estimating somewhere from five and six more pieces of machinery, brand new, to bring in over the course of the next year or two. And then long-term, we're hoping to add on in the building.
Any questions or comments?
Good to see growth. It's a win.
It's going to be a very busy summer.
That's great. I'm really happy for you, actually, so.
I can, I can remember back eight years ago, nine years ago, it was a pretty low, yeah, when you guys came in, it was, it was pretty, yeah, done a great job.
How many people are working there total now?
Sixty.
Sixty altogether?
It's, depends on the day of the week.
Hope it doesn't change daily.
And that's some part-time, some full-time.
Sure.
We've actually had some success with Norwell. We've grabbed a couple of high school students. Thursday, we've actually got one of the classes bringing, I think it's 15 students through. They're going to be there all day. I'm going to rotate them around through the facility with some of my machinists and programmers and just give them the life of what it is in a factory for the day.
Sure, that's great.
Yeah, of course, David's been very open to allowing us to bring multiple different groups in, obviously a lot of, some of the local elected officials when we took bus trip, and, and then anytime I call for a school trip, he's, he's always open to allow us to come in, which I think is great because a lot of people don't even know that it exists and, and they're producing some pretty awesome products in there for the medical device industry. And, you know, most everybody thinks that if you're a medical device, you're either in Columbia City or Warsaw. And as David can attest, he would like to stay as far away from Warsaw and their workforce issues as, as he can, so.
Sure. All right. Any other questions? Yes, if not, do we have a motion to accept the S, or Haven Manufacturing SB-1?
Salute.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carry there? Thank you, gentlemen.
You drafted the resolution.
Yeah. All right, sounds good. Thanks, gentlemen. Do we need to sign anything before they leave or? Who do you want to send those to? Nothing on there for? All right. I guess that's everybody who's on the agenda. Any questions on Ms. Rainey's business? Nope? Okay. Anything else from council? Cause if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a motion? Have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand? We're done. Stick around, we got a bunch of signatures for you guys.